Call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the October 20, 2025 City of Kalispell Council Meeting. Can I have a roll call?
Counselor Gabrielle, Counselor Graham, Counselor Dowd.
Here.
Counselor Dolman.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Hunter.
Here.
Counselor Nunley.
Here.
Counselor Carlson. Mayor Johnson.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Agents.
I would like to do the flag of the United States of America and do the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looked council for approval on the agenda. Mr. Dowd?
Your Honor, move the agenda as published.
Carlson, all in favor of the motion, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda has four items this evening. The first item is ordinance 1946. This is the second reading of zoning text amendment. This is the second reading of an ordinance that allows residential eaves to extend up to two feet into setback areas. The second item is award dump truck and plow. This item awards the bid for a new tandem axle truck chassis to Missoula State Truck Center in the amount of $239,995. The third item is award leaf vacuum trailer. This item awards the bid for a new 20 cubic yard leaf vac trailer to Normont Equipment Company in the amount of $179,520. And the fourth item is award lower zone storage tank two project. This item awards the bid for the lower zone storage tank replacement reservoir two to preload LLC in the amount of $7,040,000. Any public comments on any of the four items on the consent agenda? See none. Looked council for a motion. Mr. Nunley?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Have a roll call vote.
Counselor Dowd.
Aye.
Counselor Dolman.
Aye.
Counselor Fisher.
Aye.
Counselor Hunter.
Aye.
Counselor Nunley.
Aye.
Counselor Carlson.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, no committee report this evening, so we're going to open the meeting for public comment. Any individual wishing to address the council on items that are not on the agenda this evening, there has to step forward, state your name, and give comments to the council.
Hello, I'm Rose Askbig, and this is about the warming center. I called three weeks ago and talked to Ray because he is the neighborhood liaison, and I had some concerns about, you know, all of the incoming people and the loitering and all of that. And I left a message, and he called me back in a very reasonable amount of time. And so we've been playing a little phone tag. I called him back again and let him know that I also wanted to know when the neighborhood board meeting was coming because I hadn't heard anything and our neighbors hadn't heard anything, and I really wanted to go. It had been over a week, so I texted him on Friday. I hadn't heard anything. And I'm just going to share the text so we're all on the same page, just trying to communicate. I sent him three pictures of loitering and the hobo nation in the neighborhood. Hello, Ray, this is Rose Askbig again. The influx of homeless is compounding once again. I've yet to hear back from you on the meeting with the neighborhood. My husband and Candy Nelson have not received an email yet. As you are the neighborhood advisor, I'd appreciate a response. It didn't take him very long, but he did text me back. Hi, I'm on the way into the office, and I will get whatever info you need and get it back to you. So sorry to hear about Daryl. I'm glad he's doing okay. I'll call you within the hour. This is my personal cell and for my business, and didn't realize you'd called and left a message until last night. Thank you. I have a few errands to run. I'll watch my phone. Sounds good. Well, it's Monday night, and I still haven't heard anything. So I just don't think that they're really interested in working with the neighborhood. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I just want to play off that, Candy Nelson. We were not notified. I'm blocked from the Facebook page. I did finally get on my husband's SD that they had a meeting in September. And I thought the agreement was they were going to notify the neighborhood. So if it's just posting on their Facebook page, that doesn't notify the neighborhood because a lot of us are blocked on it. And I didn't see where it was posted anywhere else. So it would be nice because we want to participate. We'd like to get... We had a really nice summer with no one around, and now it's all back. And so if we can, whatever we can do to help mitigate that problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Anything online? Okay. We're going to move on to the first action item this evening, which is Resolution 6295, the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. This item considers adoption of the Western Montana Region Hazard Mitigation Plan, previously approved by the state FEMA and Flathead County. Mr. Nygren, presentation?
Yeah, Mayor and council, this agenda item's been discussed multiple times before the council. As you stated, the state and county and local municipalities have all adopted it. It's Resolution 6295, which would, the council would therefore adopt the Western Montana Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, which will serve as a blueprint for hazard mitigation policies, programs, and projects, and also would allow the city to potentially apply for federal disaster funding if anything were to happen in the valley. Happy to answer any additional questions.
Any questions for staff hanging over from the work session?
I should say Juanita is also online at the county if we have any other questions.
Any public comments on Resolution 6295? Motion?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. I was looking for it. I move Resolution 6295, a resolution adopting the 2024 Western Montana Region Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Dowd?
Just for public consumption, there are parts of this plan that kick off an immediate response from some federal agencies like FEMA. And I did verify that before they can step in and do anything, they do have to coordinate with the state. So that was something I was a little concerned about. And my question, my fear was alleviated by them having to coordinate with the state. So just for public knowledge, that came out in the work session.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dolman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Shocked. I thought everyone is here because I read that 795. Okay, maybe the next item. Resolution 6296, central school ownership transferred to Northwest Montana History Museum. This item authorizes the city manager to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the sale of the central school to the Northwest Montana History Museum with certain conditions. Mr. Nygren?
Yes, Mayor and council, once again, this item has been discussed before the council multiple times on, in July and as well as September. There was a request from the Northwest Montana History Museum to acquire the ownership of the central school property. They've had a lease on the property since 1997 and actually have a lease in place until 2037. Following discussion, it appeared that there was an interest in allowing for the property transfer, subject to eight conditions. The conditions are part of the resolution. I would add that one kind of slight change in the conditions from what we had previously talked about is in regards to condition number six, which says any loans taken out on a property must be approved by the council. There had been discussion about a loan guarantee or maybe a loan limit or something along those lines. But after talking with the board, there was really no desire to take any loans out at this particular time, and so we just found it prudent to put it on. If there was ever to be a loan, that would just come forth for a future council to consider. So with that, the resolution would authorize the city manager to execute any necessary documents, transferring the central school property to the museum, like I said, in, with the eight conditions. I would say that it will take probably a number of months for this to fully get in place, you know, doing the surveying and deed restrictions and such to put in place all the conditions. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. The, so the actual document of transfer that would come back to us for a vote?
No, this would authorize the city manager to execute all that.
So this would be the last time it's approved?
Yes.
So then the item, and I apologize, I've been trying to find it, pull it up, but the item that talks about if any, if there's any expansion to the building, I don't have the wording exactly in front of me, but I was thinking there is a kind of omission in that, in that you could have like remodel that's not an addition or expansion that might affect the historic qualities of the building. I'm wondering if we can add to that section, just saying kind of remodel. Obviously, there's going to be like HVAC system going in that wouldn't have likely any impact on historic nature. I'm not referring to that, but any kind of thing that might affect the historic architectural features of the building as part of a remodel.
You, it's within council's prerogative. You would want to amend condition eight to include that language if you felt that that was necessary.
You can look at Section 7842013 of the MCA that requires the property to be preserved in its present or restored state upon any subsequent transfer. That statute is about historic preservation, so I don't know that it's necessary to add it, but you're welcome to.
Okay. Maybe just for clarity. But yeah, okay, thank you.
It is a whereas. Other questions for staff? Any public comments? Guessing there might be a couple.
My name is Carlinho Sorio Cor. I'm the manager of La Lark LLC, which owns property on Main Street in Kalispell. More years than I care to remember, I was the chairman of Save the Central School Committee. And that committee had a twofold mission. One was to save the structure. The building was in dire need of repair. If you walked across the third floor, it was like being on a trampoline. And the second portion of the mission was that once the building was, you know, renovated and rehabbed, that it be a museum to celebrate the history of our city and of our county. There was an interesting group who made up the membership of Save Central School Committee. And they included Dorothy McGlen, Eddie Gilalan, Dolores Swanberg, Henry Elwood, Lois Himsel, Howard, and Maureen Jacobson. I mean, literally, this was like the who's who of families with generational roots in this city and in the valley. All of them went to their organizations or their churches, and they spoke to the mission, the twofold purposes of the mission. Save the building, renovate it, and utilize the building as a museum to celebrate the history of town and of our, and of our valley. Howard and Maureen Jacobson created massive murals that were installed in the windows of the school, all three stories telling the history of the school and its importance to the valley. And then there was a Celebrate Our History Week where it kicked off with a parade down Main Street. And every day, there was something culminating with a fun musical and exhibitions at the mall. All of this led to the building being saved and the museum being created. It's kind of sad to be here tonight because all of those people that I mentioned, they're all dead. They've all passed away, but their mission remains and the intent remains, which is that this structure needs to be continued to exist and be rehabilitated and renovated and kept up to par, and that it exists as a museum that celebrates Kalispell's history and the history of our valley. And I think those two important things are what really kind of pushed me to come this evening to remind you all of the history of how we got here and how important it is for this structure to remain as a museum. And I'm sure if Eddie and Dolores and Lois and of all of those wonderful human beings were here, they would stand with me tonight and tell you the same thing. So that's why I'm here tonight with regards to this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm Margaret Davis, and I'm the director of the Northwest Montana History Museum. And thank you all for this opportunity and just for the willingness to get so this far in the conversation. It's just wonderful. And I love hearing the stories from people who preceded us, and we stand on the shoulders of giants as far as people who were long-range thinkers for our community. I'm so grateful. Anyway, I just want to say, yeah, that I'm just brim with pride when I am talking to new visitors and I say, this town was two years old and it made this building. We have a picture of it where it's just dirt, you know, and this large building in the middle. It's just, and shows the investment in education, and it was always a community center. So we look forward to many more years of doing that. As far as like the resolution, I don't have it yet in front of me and the exact language, but I do want to make sure that we do have this insured easement that allows our ADA access. That's the key to our ramp and our elevator on the north side of the building. Really important, and also for event equipment that comes in that way. Also, if the parking at the southwest corner, that's about 12 to 15 spaces, is not partitioned off to the city, we could certainly use it for staff, visitor, event parking as our own. And also, it could be expansion. When you were talking about it being from the envelope of the building, I'm thinking maybe there's room for a standalone building that is the archival temperature-controlled storage that we crave. So that could preserve that opportunity for us, too, if we did receive that part along the alleyway. And then this future limit as a museum, I, you know, I never want to see it not a museum, but maybe it could be enlarged to say that it would be like a nonprofit or government services agency that provides like beneficial uses for the public. That way, the building, of course, on the National Register is preserved, and it's just a beautiful piece that people love to be in, but it also serves the community benefit that we do now. I just, I think the base question is how much management authority can be retained in something that is sold. And I don't know if a lawyer has looked through that and decided. But thank you again for everything that you've done and just entertaining this resolution.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Hi, my name is Jim Atkinson, as some of you may know. I felt like I had to speak tonight because if this council chooses to deliver the museum to this nonprofit, it will be like a wrapping on a package. I had the great honor of voting for the museum, and I now have the great honor of volunteering at the museum and enjoying cataloging all of the artifacts and pictures and objects. I love it, and I love it because of the staff, as well as just because of what it is. A dedicated staff that we're all in sync in saving and enlightening folks about the history of the Flathead Valley and Northwest Montana. It's been a lovely trip, and if we can wrap it up tonight, well, I'm going to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Always a councilman. Sometimes I think it's a curse, Jim.
Good evening. My name is A.J. King. And I've talked to you before, and I just want to remind everybody, my great-grandfather, Eugene Steer, was the first principal of Central School. So that is, I'm a fourth generation, and I have the... In this community right now is the fifth generation and the sixth generation that are descendants from Eugene Steer. So what I'm saying is we aren't going anywhere in this community, and I can see that I'm, I've got people that when I'm long gone, that are my relatives that are going to help out this museum because there's a lot of history there. We want to preserve the museum as much as we can. And so we, we just really appreciate the opportunity of you handing it over to us as true ownership and letting us do what we need to do to it to preserve it as a historical site, a museum. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? Okay. Mr. Nunley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to move approval of Resolution 6296, a resolution approving the sale of certain real property, commonly known as a central school, to the Northwest Montana History Museum.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Discussion?
I just, for discussion, just because it was brought up, the ADA handicap, I believe that is all covered in the whereas points. If I am reading that correct, yeah, number four, I think it is.
That's correct. And what would happen is part of the surveying and such, we would, we would provide for that easement at that time. I will say that all the parking spaces on the property would be maintained in city ownership as well. We actually have permits sold in those to business owners. So at this time, all those city spots would remain under city ownership. Public parking spots would remain under city ownership.
Sure.
Including the, including the alley.
Including the alley, yes.
Other discussion? Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, I will go ahead and make the motion to amend just because I think it'd be helpful for clarity if somebody were going back and reading the original terms of the approval and also knowing that state law can change, even though I think that'd be highly unlikely for this particular instance. But, and also no concerns about the current management of the museum, but thinking this is going to be a long-term thing, just for any future possibilities. To amend the final whereas of the resolution, number eight, so it reads, "Any future and/or expansion of the building footprint or renovation that may impact the historic features of the building require council approval."
Got a motion to amend number, add number eight with a second? Eyes for lack of a second. Anything else, Mr. Hunter?
No, that's it. I'll be supporting that.
Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, so I think it'd be a little bit helpful for people that don't have the whereas clauses or the, the conditions of this, to just read off a couple of them, if you'll bear with me. The handicap parking space on the north side of the building on city property will remain accessible to the museum. That is number four. Number five, if the city parking lot on the north side of the building is ever used for purposes other than public parking, the city will work with the museum on an alternative location of a handicap parking space that meets ADA requirements. Construction of the ADA parking space will be the responsibility of the museum. And then number seven, which I think is probably the most important here to alleviate some of the concerns, is the property shall revert back to the city if used for any purposes other than the historic museum. I think those are very important, and that's just for your knowledge if you don't actually have the, the resolution in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to say, I think this is a really good thing. When my kids were in grade school, they went to the museum, and they loved it. And so it's something that will stay in our valley, you know, forever. So I am in full support of this. Thank you.
Let's get a couple of comments. One, I want to thank every one of you who've put your time and effort, tears, money, everything into this project. And I think it's good to see this move into the hands. I will be supporting it moving into the, into your hands. I don't think a municipality, a local government that comes and goes is necessarily the best place to house our history and house those common, those common pieces of fabric that we should have within our community. There is often a sense of history that gets lost, and if you look at the evolution of society over time, wow, we're way different now than we were even 10 years ago. So I think it's important to promote and keep these senses of history. Mr. King, the long lineage of your family in the valley and many of the families here that are, that are supporting this, it's nice not to lose those touches because people come, people go. And as new people come in, they need to understand what are the core pieces of fabric that made this Flathead Valley, that made this Kalispell. And I want to applaud you for exercising your free will to make sure that this continues. So I will be supporting this wholeheartedly. Can I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dolman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher? Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Now stick around. We have two more great items. Leaves. We have a final plat and the subdivision improvement agreement. Jim knows all about these. Thank you. So I'm going to keep moving ahead because I have three more official meetings after this because I'll be on vacation the first week in November. I want to... Third item is Aspen Creek West Phase One Final Plat Subdivision Improvement Agreement and Memorandum of Understanding. This item considers final plat approval, a subdivision improvement agreement, and a memorandum of understanding for this 15.02 acre phase that includes 52 residential lots off of three-mile drive.
And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to PJ. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to PJ Sorenson for a staff report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Council. Five Twenty Three Mile Drive Associates LLC has submitted a request for final plat approval of Aspen Creek West Phase One. This phase contains approximately 15 acres, including 52 single-family and townhouse residential lots, common area and streets. And you can see with the location here, it's just right on the south side of Three Mile Drive between Aspen Creek and the adjoining subdivision on the west. The city council approved the preliminary plat with 37 conditions on July 5th, 2022, along with the planned unit development that contained two phases. It's kind of split with the creek coming through the middle. Phase one that we're focused on is the southern portion, and phase two is the area that was accessed off of Three Mile. And just running through the four sheets real quick. All the conditions been met or adequately addressed. All infrastructure has been installed and accepted or bonded for. There is a subdivision improvement agreement in the amount of $835,195.56 secured by two separate letters of credit. One's for $360,160, and one is for $475,035.56. And that's included for council's consideration. Just as an aside, the reason there was two letters of credit is because Hayden Homes is purchasing all the lots in there and be doing the completion of the landscaping and park area. And it was just simpler to have two separate letters of credit so one could be released to one or the other when their, their portion was completed. In addition, a memorandum of understanding was prepared for the council's consideration. The MOU is the result of a five-year warranty period for infrastructure rather than the typical two-year period. The longer warranty period resulted from inconsistencies in the frequency of compaction testing, which potentially could impact the infrastructure within the subdivision. Since the typical warranty bonding is for a two-year period, the MOU provides for renewing the bond after the initial two-year period is expired. With that, staff would recommend that the city council approve the final plat for Aspen Creek West Phase One, as well as both the subdivision improvement agreement and memorandum of understanding, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Any public comments on the agreement? Motion? Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we approve the final plat for Aspen Creek West Phase One, as well as both the subdivision improvement agreement and memorandum of understanding.
Second. Second, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Discussion? See none? Can I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunnely?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, Resolution sixty-two, ninety-seven. Board of Investment Loan for Front Load Truck. This item authorizes the city manager to execute the necessary documents to finalize a board of investment loan in the amount of $416,900 to purchase a front-load solid waste truck. Mr. Nygren, presentation?
Yeah, just a little, little bit of house cleaning here, getting a loan in place for a piece of equipment that has been purchased. Pretty standard procedure. Like, like you mentioned, it just authorizes Montana Board of Investments loan for the purchase of a garbage truck, which kind of allows the city to spread, spread that out over a number of years, which helps with some cash flow, and happy to answer any questions. It is for up to five years and 5% annual interest rate, depending on the annual adjustment. But like I said, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff on this? I know we had a lot of work session on solid waste. Any public comments on this item? Motion? Mr. Dowd, spending money.
Your Honor, I move Resolution number six, two, nine, seven, a resolution authorizing participation in the Board of Investments of the State of Montana Annual Adjustable Rate Municipal Finance Consolidation Act Extendable Bond Intercap Loan Program, approving the form and terms of the loan agreement and authorizing the execution and delivery of documents related thereto.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Discussion?
Speaking of my motion, I am excited about our front loader garbage truck, even though, I mean, who, who as a little kid didn't like these huge trucks, right? Even though, since 2019, they have doubled in price. It went from around 200 grand to 400 and some grand. I don't like that piece of it, but there's nothing we can do about it. We need the garbage truck to provide the services that we have promised to the public. So we're following through on that.
Amazing what happens when you push $6 trillion into an economic system, isn't it?
Yep.
Glad we didn't spend ours. We saved it. At least it maybe covered the cost of inflation.
I don't know if spend, but you inflate.
Yes, inflated. Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunnely?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Nygren, city manager, report?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, do have a work session next week. We're going to do a presentation on the East Oregon Demonstration Grant that the city received. Actually, it's been quite some time now. The program's kind of been on hold with some changes at the federal level. But just going to go over that project, talk about what the status is, what some options are. And as part of that, we are also going to do a notice to the neighborhood, just so you're aware, at least the adjacent property owners on Oregon Street. So we're going to go ahead and do that. Because I know that there's been a lot of input in the past on, on Oregon, as well as there's some concerns even with this project. So we just want to go over that, looking for a little direction. And that's what we'll be talking about next week. That's it.
Anything from council? Starting there and going this way. Mr. Dowd?
I appreciate the meeting tonight. I know that we did, we did talk about solid waste quite a bit here in the past year. And some people might think that every time we are up here on council, we are adding to the solid waste. But anyway, I also wanted to inquire to Public Works about what's, I know we can ride along with the police and the, and the fire department, but can we ride along with the garbage guys as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I, I've actually had the opportunity to ride in the new truck with the second week we were starting the routes. And it's actually, it's an eye-opener. Just they have a little trial ground in the trouble of trucks. So we're excited for the opportunity, and we're, we're learning more and more that we provide that service.
Other than that, I just wanted to make sure that the community understands that no matter if there's an election going on or not, we all have to live with each other after this election, see each other at the supermarket, and please keep that in mind when you're making comments.
I just can't wait till after the election so I can start marching. Coming this way. No? No?
No.
No?
No.
You know, speaking of ride-alongs, that would be kind of fun to do, actually, because the landfill, now, we're going to figure out, when I'm done, I'm off the landfill board. So remember, I'm not, it's not that long and I'm done.
How many, three meetings?
It is the absolute most interesting board that you can serve on, understanding, I hate to say it, what happens with our garbage. But it is really actually pretty interesting. The science behind it's incredible. So I encourage every council member to consider it because it's a great board. We don't know who will be here. I don't know. We don't know. So I'm just encouraging all who are listening. There's, I see, you know, candidates watching, everything else. Then that does bring me to one other thing. For 12 years, chief, I have begged, borrowed, or begged and pleaded for a light bar for my truck. I'm sure the city attorney would never have approved. Chief never approved. If whoever wins as mayor is approved getting a light bar, I am going to come undone. And I will go, I don't know if I can say postal anymore. So, anyway, I just want that as a word of warning. But no, I just wanted to say a couple of things. One, what I said tonight, I think is, is, was really important. What we're seeing with, with the museum, one, the preservation of the historic aspect of who we are as a city is important. And Mr. Dowd, you touched on it. We're going to have an election. Whoever comes in as mayor, whoever comes in as council, all we can do is pass to elected official, elected officials, is do what we can to support you when you have questions, whoever wins. So I, it's my pledge that if whoever wins, wins in the sitting in this seat or wherever you choose to sit, always an open phone, call me. Don't email. Call. Because record searches are ugly. You don't know what I might reply. I'm a free citizen. But anyway, I'm always open for a call because after 12 years of doing this, I've seen ups, I've seen downs, I've seen things change. And I understand the pressures that you're going to be working under. So if you ever need anything, it's my offer to be there to support you. Because in the end, seeing that next building in 50 years that we think is important, being able to be put up as a museum, to me is more critical than being a jerk to whoever wins, if I don't like him or don't vote for him.
That's right.
We need to be supportive of each other in this community and understand we all have a stake in it, and our hopes are to see it get better every day as we go. And with that, we're adjourned.